Okay. Everybody ready? Good evening. This meeting of the Oak Park City Council is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Norris, would you call the roll?
Mayor McClellan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Here.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Radnor.
Here.
Councilmember Crawford.
Here.
The gang's all here, thank you. We have a quorum. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda. These are routine items presented for approval without discussion as a single item. Any member who wishes to discuss any item can have it dropped from the blanket motion of approval and considered separately. A. Regular city council meeting minutes for June 16th, 2025. B. Payment of invoices from OHM advisors for engineering consulting services in the total amount of $18,444. C. Approval of pay application number one for the 2025 Northfield Reconstruction Project M-770 in the amount of $123,965.35. D. Arts and Cultural Diversity Commission meeting minutes for May 8th. E. Parks and Recreation Commission meeting minutes for April 16th and May 21st. F. Request to approve payment application number six for the 2024 Block Pruning Project to Lim Walkers Tree &amp; Snow Limited of Kanaki, Michigan in the amount of $8,625. G. Payment request from Newman Smith Architecture for architectural services on the Event Hub project for the total amount of $10,530. H. Approval of pay application number one and change order number two to Luigi Ferdandini &amp; Son Cement Company of Roseville, Michigan for the 2025 Catch Basin Line Replacement Project M-779 in the amount of $257,651.94 and a credit of $42,126.18 respectively. I. New and renewal licenses for July 7th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Special recognition presentations. Director Cooper. City Manager Eric Tungate will introduce the director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I would like to read a plaque in special recognition of Lieutenant Joseph Meyer, who is retiring and has served here at the city of Oak Park since 2000. The mayor, council, and administration of the city of Oak Park, Michigan in testament and tribute to his distinguished public service and lasting contributions to the city of Oak Park and its residents wish to express their sincere appreciation to Lieutenant Joseph Meyer. You have served as a pillar of integrity in this organization and have helped to set the city's high standard of excellence. You have served as a source of guidance, support, and leadership for your colleagues. And it is those qualities that will leave a lasting imprint on the city of Oak Park. Your dedicated spirit, wealth of knowledge, and overall dedication to the city of Oak Park will be sorely missed. Signed, Mary McClellan, Mayor, Eric Tungate, City Manager. Lieutenant Meyer, I just want to say, if you're watching at home, thank you for your service. It's sad to see you go, but I'm also very excited for your next chapter in life. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director Steve Cooper.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, City Manager Tungate. Obviously, Lieutenant Meyer's not able to be here today, but he wanted me to express a sincere thank you to the city manager and city council for the acknowledgement. And I would just like to have a few words about Lieutenant Meyer, his career. Lieutenant Joseph Meyer officially retired from the city of Oak Park on Thursday, July 31st, after 25 years of honorable service as a public safety officer. He is a highly decorated officer who has earned numerous commendations and awards throughout his distinguished career. He's held a variety of roles, consistently demonstrating a strong commitment to public service. Lieutenant Meyer began his career as a public safety officer, and very soon thereafter, he served as a field training officer. He's an evidence technician, and for many years, he was in charge of our Evidence Technicians Program. He's also a less lethal instructor and was also in charge of that program for several years. Lieutenant Meyer was a member of the department's special response team, and I had the pleasure of serving alongside him on the special response team as well. He was promoted to the rank of detective and served several years in the Investigations Bureau, working some of the most challenging and difficult cases during his tenure. He was soon there promoted to patrol sergeant and was the department's first supervisor of our K-9 program. Soon after taking over as the K-9 program, he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. He served as a background investigator and also advanced to the rank of administrative lieutenant slash fire marshal. He's a graduate of the Eastern Michigan University Leadership School of Staff and Command. He also has served as the president and vice president on the Oak Park Officers Labor Council. The many contributions he's made along with his hard work and dedication to the Oak Park Department of Public Safety are greatly appreciated. I wish him well in his retirement, and may God continue to bless him and keep him as he starts the next chapter of his life. I want to thank city council for letting us take the time for that acknowledgement.
Thank you. Director Cooper, thank you. Item eight is ordinances. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Sections 18211, 18215, and 18231 of Chapter 18, Articles 5 and 6 of the Code of Ordinances. The amendments update compliance provisions to align with state law and the 2021 version of the International Property Maintenance Code that the city of Oak Park has adopted as a reference. Is there a motion to approve the second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Unanimous. City Manager Eric Tungate.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. 9A1, I would like to turn over to Director Kimberly Maroney to go over for me, please. Hi, Kim.
Thank you, City Manager Tungate. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. In front of you, I have a resolution to approve the purchase of a tax foreclosed property, 10670 West Nine Mile Road. This is a building that has been dilapidated for many years. It is finally rolled to tax that it is now in foreclosure, and since we have the right of first refusal, we think it is in the best interest of the city to purchase the property for redevelopment. It has already gone to the Corridor Improvement Authority Board for their approval and purchasing. We don't plan to retain the building for any length of time. We want to resell it to a redeveloper so that we can hopefully see a mixed-use development on that site, and we would do that through an RFP process.
Okay. First, we need a motion to approve this resolution, purchasing this tax foreclosed parcel.
So moved.
Second.
Can you tell us, when you do the request for proposal, what are you going to be asking to be developed on this site?
Yeah, I'm not sure if you recall when we did an RFP for the properties on Coolidge, where the Coolidge Place development is. Our priority was for a mixed-use development on that site, but it didn't quite work in that location. But this one would be more restricted in the sense that we would want it to be a mixed-use development. And mixed-use means that you have a commercial development on the main level and residential on the upper floors.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to actually ask our city attorney a question, which I'm not sure that's ever actually happened during the course of a meeting, but here we are. There are some, we had, I think, four or five tax foreclosed properties on the list this year. This was one of them. Obviously, I would be very much in support of this purchase. It's a strategic purchase.
Yes.
And a really signature development opportunity for us. My question to you, though, is there were outstanding water bills and some outstanding code blight assessments. Will those have to be paid separately from this, or can those be included in this purchase price?
Normally, the owner is responsible for those, but to the extent that the city did bill for those, if the city is taking ownership of the property, you would essentially be responsible to yourself for resolving those invoices.
Even though those invoices occurred and the outstanding water bill occurred prior to our ownership, those would not need to be part of the purchase price?
The utility bill, the water bill, is rolled in with the tax, so that would be included in the bid amount for the property. And then any blight that came about since the foreclosure process would become the city's responsibility, so you would be eating those costs.
Okay, so we'll recover those upon sale of the property, but, and I just want to make sure that this purchase price is correct.
That is correct, and it's actually set in part by Oakland County because, under the new law, we are required to pay market value for tax foreclosed properties, and that market value is determined based upon double the assessed value, per state law plus any outstanding utilities. So that's how that price is determined.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. Question, Councilmember Edgar.
So tell us a little bit about what this building was used for and when it sort of started to fade into what led to its foreclosure.
So I can tell you that it was an insulation company that has been there. I've been with the city now for 11 years, and it already had faded when I arrived 11 years ago. It's a business that we've had to write numerous code violations for. The county's always been chasing them for payment of their taxes, and business licenses were never kept up to date, so we've had numerous issues with this property over the years. They've always just done just enough to not get foreclosed upon, but now they've exceeded all of those opportunities and more than likely were entered into a payment plan with previous tax rolls and then didn't make a payment, which then brings them up for foreclosure.
And how large is the property?
Property is approximately about a half an acre.
And what would be a good use for this?
So a mixed-use development, if you remember the nine apartments on Nine Mile Road, that site is very similar in size. So you would do, instead of just all three floors of residential, you could do commercial properties on the main level and residential up top, a lot like what you see in cities like Royal Oak and Ferndale.
I think it's great. Thank you.
Further questions?
I have one, actually.
Yes. City Manager Tungate.
Director Maroney, I want to just, I'm going to have you just alliterate a little bit on this, but just so everyone is aware, this is on the same block as the Pocket Park.
Correct. If people remember where the lollipops are, it's near the lollipops where that median crosswalk is, near Seneca Park.
It's across from the Linear Park as well, right?
Absolutely. Yep, and Connector Park.
So, in other words, a very strategic location.
Absolutely.
For a signature-style development.
Yep.
Catalyst signature development for us.
Absolutely.
Exciting. Now, no further questions or comments. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Yes.
And Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay. 9A2, Director Maroney, please.
Yes, this is for an approval of a pay application number two, change order one to eminent excavating for the Water Main Replacement Project M-769 in the amounts of $293,970.43 and the change order of $17,530.20. This project is now 75% complete.
Okay, we need a motion approving the pay application.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Maroney. 9B1, Deputy City Manager DeCosta, please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager Tungate. Earlier this year, the public works staff wrote a grant to the DNR for a comprehensive tree inventory and tree planting throughout the city. I'm happy to report that in June last month, we were notified that we award this grant for the total amount of $118,171. This is 100% reimbursable grant. The tree inventory will be a value asset as we continue to utilize GPS in our day-to-day operations. The tree survey will include every right-of-way tree within the city and will log its location, size, species, condition, risk rating, as well as log a picture. A budget amendment will be required to fund this product until reimbursements are received from the DNR. It's recommended that city council approve the Michigan Department of Natural Resources grant agreement in the amount of $118,171 and allow the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. It is further recommended to allow the finance department to perform a budget amendment in the total amount of $118,171 to fund this project until reimbursements are received from the DNR.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
I have a question.
Question, Councilmember Radnor.
Is there any chance that this is going to be repealed by the big, beautiful bill? Do we know?
We have asked that question. They could not give us a straight answer. They don't believe so. It has passed through and been funded, but they could not guarantee that for us.
Okay. Is there any assurance at all that we can get?
Not that I know of.
I'd love to take the money, but at the same time, I don't want to be stuck holding the bag.
I understand. Yeah, I mean, obviously, it's a value, it's something we want to do for a while.
Yeah.
Regardless of we get the money. Like I said, we did ask a question. They are fairly confident that this is not, nothing's going to happen to this money as it is funded. I will certainly ask that question again.
Oh, it's funded already?
It's funded.
Oh, okay, okay.
They said that's just not a guarantee anymore.
It's, of course, not.
You know, back in the day it used to be.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
City Manager.
So, as councilmembers, as part of this, we would be executing a signed agreement with them.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Our intent is to hold them to that signed agreement.
Absolutely.
All right. Feeling more and more comfortable as you keep talking?
Question, what is the definition of the right-of-way tree?
So basically, our city right-of-ways are like between the back of the sidewalk and the back of the sidewalk. So if you're driving up a street, anywhere between the sidewalks is considered the right-of-way. So we'll be picking up all the trees in front of everybody's houses.
So it will list the tree in front of your house and the age of the tree and what breed of tree it is and what condition it's in, and a picture?
Correct.
So we will have a complete picture of it?
Yep. And our staff is, we don't have any of this now. We're entering it all in manually by hand. As we go through and build our maintenance contracts and our maintenance schedules for all the trees in the city, we do this now on an individual basis. So we will have all that at our disposal, and it'll just make our, you know, much more efficient.
So we will be able to catch the tree before it goes bad, maybe?
That's the hope.
That's great. And I noticed that this whole contract was 100 pages long with two additions onto it. It's like $1,000 a page.
Pretty much.
That is one long contract. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just have one question for...
Yes. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Have, has Oak Park ever had an arborist on staff?
I believe we had an arborist on staff about 20 years ago. They were just a member of our Public Works Division and our Forestry Division, but we have not had one. We have, our new deputy director, Eric Knack, has been willing to study for it, so he is currently studying for it, and I would think within the next year, our goal is to get him as a certified arborist. So again, we have one on staff.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy City Manager DeCosta, 9B2, but if you could, before, as part of your explanation of this one, if you could explain why it's important that this contract not be held by our general contractor?
Sure. So at November 4th, 2024, regular meeting of the Oak Park City Council, the request to bid the 2025 Event Hub project was approved. The product was advertised, and on April 29th, 2025, bids were received and opened. Elbow Masonry was the low bidder for category G masonry. While our construction manager holds the majority of the Event Hub contracts, this, the city will hold a few of these contracts throughout the project. The Elbow contract is one of these contracts. Frank Riwal will still manage the contract. Posted bid interviews were held, and the administration is comfortable with this contractor. Funding is available in the Parks and Recreation Improvement Fund for this project, and this contract is accounted for in our final GMP. To answer the city manager's question, it's a union issue. They're a, they're a non-union firm, so our construction manager typically doesn't hold non-union contracts. We've discussed this early on with them. It's not an issue. Our grant, and our grants, our grants throughout the federal government do not require Davis-Bacon union contracts or anything like that, so we did not go above and beyond for that. So on this particular contract, we would just hold this contract, still managed by our construction manager. No one would see any difference. It's just we are holding this contract specifically.
Let's see. I believe we need a motion to award Arbo Masonry the contract for the 2025 Event Hub project in the amount of $600,800. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Questions or discussion? Did someone recommend this particular company?
I believe our construction manager's worked with them many times in the past. Like I said, we did go through a formal sealed bid process. They were one of the multiple people who did bid on this category. They were low. We did post-bid interviews, were comfortable with their price, they're comfortable with the project. So yeah, they were recommended and they were approved by the administration.
All right. Ready to vote?
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Yes.
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay. And 9B3, Deputy City Manager DeCosta, and as part of this, if you could also explain, where is Kanaki, Michigan? Never heard of it.
I'm going to avoid that question. Lim Walkers Tree &amp; Snow has requested a contract extension of the 2024 Block Pruning Project. The city would like to extend one year, a one-year extension on this project to perform the 2025 project. The current contract allows for two one-year extensions. Exhibit A, which is attached in your agenda, includes the unchanged pricing for this contract extension. There is $95,000 budgeted in the major and local streets funds, and it's recommended that city council approve the offer from Lim Walkers Tree &amp; Snow for the contract extension of the 2024 Block Pruning Project. And I guess to answer your question, I believe it's in the thumb.
I just looked it up, so...
It is west of Port Huron.
There you go.
I think it's west of Port Huron.
Do we have a motion to extend this contract?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. We're happy with their work, obviously?
Yes, we are.
Yep. All right. Ready to vote?
Councilmember Crawford.
Yes.
Councilmember Edgar.
Yes.
Mayor McClellan.
Yes.
Councilmember Radnor.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Whitehead.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager Elevato Park.
Okay, councilmembers, finally, and there should be a slide that I'm going to speak to. So this slide is regarding pool repairs and maintenance. I typically don't give an Elevato Park update until the second meeting of the month, but I wanted to give you an update. We have spent some more funds this year already on repairs and supplies for the pool. Grand total amount of money that we have spent for our pool, our outdoor pool, over the last five years is right around $368,000, including $29,771 on supplies and repairs already this year, just to keep it open for this final season. So I wanted to make sure that, councilmembers, you had an awareness of that.
And why is all this money being spent on pool repairs?
The pool was, we don't, I don't think we actually know the exact date of construction of the pool, do we?
No, but it's around 66 years old.
So, yeah, so we think late 50s, 60s. So the guts of the pool are extraordinarily aging, of course, and we've been patching it together year in and year out. But that's $368,000 over the last five years of our taxpayers' funds. That, unfortunately, it does feel that we're throwing good money after bad at this point. So the freeze and thaw, you know, cycle in Michigan, it contributes to the decay of the infrastructure of the pool dramatically. To redo that outdoor pool, you're talking millions of dollars in cost, not including the maintenance cost. An indoor pool, we spent, you know, over a year talking to our community about their wants and desires for the new community center. The number-one thing on that list, after we participated in those year-long sessions, was a indoor pool, year-round indoor pool. So to maintain and run an indoor pool, believe it or not, is actually more affordable than an outdoor pool, just because it's not subject to the freeze-thaw cycles and it's used constantly and maintained constantly. So, you know, of the community center projects, and I think Dave might have a better number on this, but I think the indoor pool is about 8 million of that, eight, maybe more, of that total $44 million project. So that's an indoor pool. The cost to rebuild an outdoor pool is going to be right in that range somewhere. So, you know, you wanted my feedback and input, and here you go. So happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. So if the taxpayers wanted, my daughter lives in Bend, Oregon, which is a very well-to-do community over the Cascade Mountains. They have five pools, two outside and, three outside and two indoors. And so if money is no object, we could have indoor and outdoor. If we want to tax ourselves some more, we could put something on the ballot, you know, do you want to raise your taxes a third time this year and finance an indoor pool? So for all the people that really want to do that, there are a bunch of people who are saying, don't waste our tax money on, you know, an outdoor pool or continuing this outdoor pool or building a new outdoor pool when we're going to have an indoor pool, which is, you know, available all year. So there's pros and cons, and we would, I'm sure during call to the audience, we will hear many of your opinions, and we welcome your opinions.
Madam Mayor, if I could, just for clarification, regarding taxes for, if we were to build a new outdoor pool, we do not have room left under our headly operating 20 mils to do that. So the only way that we could do that would be to go back out to the voters and get some bonded debt approved specifically for that purpose, which would no doubt require a ballot initiative, so...
Right. Okay.
And with that, unless there are other questions, that completes the city manager report for this evening.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
So how much would it cost to build a new outdoor pool?
Eight to 10.
Do we have any idea?
We have not received a formal, you know, price point on that, but I'm just, you know, just based on what it costs to build the indoor pool, I think you're looking somewhere between 8 and 10 million probably, or more. The cost is... The cost is astronomical. And, and I don't, you know, I also don't want anyone to walk away from my comments tonight thinking that I'm against the outdoor pool. I have no, I'm not against the outdoor pool at all. I think it's a wonderful asset, but, you know, it, it did not rise to the top when we went through a year of community input sessions to come up with the Elevato Park proposal. An indoor pool did. Number one on the list, indoor pool. Number two, indoor track. So we intend on building that as part of our new community center too, so.
I think that because the pool looks so good on the top, that you don't realize what terrible condition the mechanical guts are. Because from the top, it looks just fine. Yes.
Just one question for city manager.
So Mayor Pro Tem, Sean Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last time when we talked about this issue, there was some people who said that there was an outdoor pool within 30 miles radius of us, and then there were some people that said that there was no pool within that, in that area, other than ours that's outdoor. Do we have any knowledge on, on which one was true?
I'm, I'm actually gonna defer the answer to that to our Recreation Director, Lori. If you probably would know better than anybody. I, I can just tell you, I know for a fact that the city of Troy has outdoor, an outdoor pool as well as an indoor pool.
As well as Red Oaks?
Red Oaks, okay. In Madison Heights? But that's a county park, right?
Yeah.
But I know in the city of Detroit, they have, they have some of those as well. Is Livonia indoor, outdoor, or is it just indoor?
Outdoor as well.
Outdoor as well, so.
So my second question is, and I see we have some of our Southfield superstars here, but we have an agreement with Southfield where they come and do a deal with our pool, where they're able to get charged the, I think, the community rate, and then they pay the difference at the end of the year. Is that something that we could try to explore, maybe to appease, meet in the middle ground with some of the pushback we're getting from our residents on social media and other things?
Absolutely. It definitely, I think, you know, we, we haven't put a lot of, I mean, we've, we've discussed the operating structure for the, for the indoor pool as well as the community center. But I think, you know, just generally speaking, I think it's safe to say that there is no question that our, our goal would be to run the community center, including the indoor pool, so that we do not have to charge our residents. I don't know that that's going to happen yet, but it would be in our best interest, generally speaking, to allow for those agreements to be continued, to allow as many people as possible, especially those coming in from the outside, because the more revenue we receive, the more we can offset some of our costs.
But so, so, so this is the part of my question I was asking though. So say the residents want an outdoor pool too. So say Pleasant Ridge has an outdoor pool. Would we be able to do a deal possibly, or at least explore that, like we had, like Southfield has with us? Does that make sense?
Yes, so we've talked to Pleasant Ridge and Huntington Woods both about our residents. They have not been interested in that in the past. It doesn't mean we can't revisit it. And certainly with other communities like Troy or Livonia, I see no reason why we can't do that outreach and have those conversations, so that while we're waiting for our stuff to be built, certainly, we can have that asset available. I mean, I think, and there's probably, there's more than worth saying, I'm sure of it, but there's no reason why we can't do that outreach on behalf of our, our residents.
So I think that would be one action point, and then the second action point would be kinda like what Councilwoman Edgar is saying, is I think we should get a number for what a pool costs nowadays, especially since we haven't done it since the 60s for outdoor. So then that way, we can let them know, like, this is, this is what the bill will be.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think, so we're gonna be getting a num, a real number once we get ready to bid out the community center, because it's gonna be part of the bid, obviously. But I think right now, the estimate for that is about, of the 44 million that we have bonded for, we're gonna be bonding for, about 8 million or so right now, current day, is going to be allocated for the indoor pool. So it's gonna be right in that figure somewhere, 8 to 10 million, I would, I would safely say. But again, just to go back on what you were asking about a moment ago, there's no reason why we can't go out and, and try to find alternatives, you know, for our residents while, while they're waiting for these facilities to be built. I, I think also, I, I don't typically get involved in social media. I did read some of the comments and things. This is not a five-year timeline. So our intent is to build the new community center within the next three years. Unfortunately, it probably is gonna be two years' worth of construction. It's a large, it's probably 60,000 to 80,000-foot facility. So there is going to be a extended construction period of time. So, you know, if you do the math, that's about three years down the road from this, this pool season right now, so.
Then my last question, sorry, Madam Mayor.
You're happy to.
The, there was a good point brought up about the mini golf that we had. Are we, are we talking about incorporating that into the, the plans of Parks and Rec?
Well, the mini golf, you know, I know it's a, it's a nostalgic asset of the city. First off, at least, that did not, and not even in the range of recommendations that we received from our community over that year timeframe. In those community meetings, no one brought that up. I think maybe one or two, maybe one or two people. But it did not rise to the top. Having said that, as we look to develop the property around the new community center, there will be opportunities for maybe a splash pad and other, you know, pickleball courts, what we're talked about. But there will be opportunities to, you know, incorporate mini golf or other features like that down the road.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Discussion? Thank you for looking at that objectively and giving us your opinion and information. And we appreciate your report. You wanna do call to the audience?
Yes.
Call to the audience. Each speaker's remarks are a matter of public record. The speaker alone is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Oak Park does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. Any person while being heard at a city council meeting may be called to order by the chair or any council member for failure to be germane to the business of the city, vulgarity, or personal attacks on persons or institutions. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker.
Do we have cards for speakers? Yes.
Yeah, first card I have, Silva Haywood.
To the mayor and the councilman and guests, good afternoon. My name is Silva Haywood, and I am the Block Club President of Conosha, Gardener, and Church. I have, I got a proposal, and then I have, I have a question. Hope you guys can answer it. But anyway, the first one on my list is, I'm gonna go with this one here. I am very concerned about the motorists. I, I don't know what's going on with the motorists now. They driving like crazy. They are not, okay, the street that I'm concerned about is, is, no, is Pearson and Conosha. Okay, there is two stop signs. One is headed, it's on Pearson, headed west. Okay, and there is another one, it's on Conosha, that is headed south. I believe, yeah. South. But anyway, I have a pet, I have a pet peeve of the motorists. Instead of them honoring the stop sign, they are, it's like an open space there where you can make a U-turn and turn around and go back, back towards Coolidge. And this is what they are doing. And on 4th of July, I was totally petrified, because I just thought, I, I was on the front porch, and it was almost two accidents. And if it had a, if the other person had not been cautious enough to put on her signal and, and drive with caution, it would have been a accident. Could have been fatal. But I, it, it's just crazy. So my thing is this, either they're needing other stops. I don't know what, what they need, because they're not respecting the ones that's already there. But to my regulation, I thought maybe that if a policeman could camp around and just see how the motorists is driving, and that would give them some idea.
What time of the day is the worst?
I'm sorry?
What time of day is the worst? Like, coming home from work, 5 to 7?
4th of July, it was like late in the evening, like 4 o'clock, from 4 on up to like 8.
So we will report this as it's already being reported right now.
Right.
So that one's taken care of. Do you have another point to make?
Yes, I do. Do I have enough time?
30 seconds.
Oh, 30, oh my God. What can I do? Okay, but anyway, I'm gonna make it brief. The, the other one that I have, I would like to, looking forward to next year, for a block club celebration. I would like to, I would like to get some pointers of what kind of procedure would take place if we have like a block club celebration, a block celebration on the street.
Oh.
And, and if doing so, I would like to know what kind of procedures.
There is a special event form, just a little one-pager that you fill out.
At the city hall?
And they will close the street for you, and you can have your block club on your street.
Okay.
Party on your street.
Gotcha. Okay, one more thing. Okay, it came to mind about donations. Going, asking different businesses if they wouldn't mind giving a donation or something to help the, you know, to help the celebration more, more of a success. I mean, is that against the law? No?
They're having a block club, they're, they're gonna fill in the form to.
Yeah, you know, if you, if you ask for different things, like Glories, you know, neighborhood stores, like donation, like paper goods and stuff like that of that nature. So I, I'm just getting some feed points. I just wanna know, would that be out of order?
I think you can ask. All they can say is no. I, I don't think there's anything.
So who do I ask?
Say it again. Oh, come see.
Oh.
The city clerk.
Oh, city clerk. Okay, gotcha.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to everyone in the auditorium, especially the elected officials on the dais. I am here to talk about an event that is including your Director of Public Safety, Director Steve Cooper. We're having another community forum in the city of Southfield on Wednesday, July 23rd, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. We're gonna be talking about the dangers of synthetic drugs and human trafficking. Now, why are we gonna talk about that?
Give us the date and the time and the place again.
Wednesday, July 23rd, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Southfield Pavilion, located at 26,000 Evergreen Road, right in the little roundabout area. Okay, so we're gonna be talking about the dangers of synthetic drugs and human trafficking. And why are we gonna talk about that subject? If you look on all of the law enforcement agencies in southeastern Michigan and beyond, there's a lot of arrests and busts on synthetic drugs, fentanyl, OxyContin, methamphetamine, and this new date rape drug. And if you look at a little bit further on some of the crimes that they're solving, everything seems to be human trafficking. We had a presentation on human trafficking to select our officer that would do the presentation for this event, and the very next day, she busted a doctor in the city of Southfield on Northwestern Highway involved in human trafficking that lives in Royal Oak. So if you Google that, it'll come up. We're gonna have the highest-ranking Michigan State Police Officer, the Colonel, that's gonna be doing the talk about synthetic drugs, and our Officer Cece that works for the city of Southfield. She's going to be doing the presentation about human trafficking. We got enough community donations from businesses and just people that I know to put this flyer in five different publications under CNG newspapers. So we're gonna have it in the Southfield Sun, which goes to 26,000 homes, the Farmington Hills Press, which goes to 31,000 homes, Homes The Woodward Talk, which goes to Berkeley, Ferndale, Huntington Woods, and Pleasant Ridge, that's 19,000 homes. The Royal Oak Review, which goes to Royal Oak and Clausen, that's 32,000 homes, and also The Eagle, which goes to Bloomfield Hills, Birmingham, Bingham Farms, Beverly Hills, Franklin Village, and Southfield Township. And to speak to Ms. Haywood, if you want to get community people to do your event, you let them know a couple of things, in all honesty. One, that you're not a nonprofit organization, and that you cannot accept checks. So if you want them to do something, either donate the item, or if it's something that needs to be paid for, you ask the person that wants to help out with the event to pay the vendor. So you're not getting any money, but you're still getting the money for the event. And I hope you all can come. And do you mind if I put a flyer up there for all of you?
Not a bit. And so this is July 23rd, from 5:30 to 8:30 at the Southfield Pavilion.
Yes, and I hope to see you all there. And just so you'll know, Director Cooper participated in all three of the forums that we had in 2023.
Thank you. Thank you. Fabulous.
Next up is Cheryl Weiss.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I'm not talking about the pool, so you can take a breath at that. What I do wanna say is how much I appreciate the 4th of July. Especially City Manager Eric Tungate, thank you for listening and for responding. And Mayor Mary McClellan, City Council. The idea of not having a celebration was heartbreaking, so thank you for making it work. And I think it was a wonderful event. And I also want to acknowledge the way they did the pancake breakfast, and I was not involved in it this year. So to Kimberly Schaaf and her team, they did an excellent job. And I, I heard so many positive comments about how nice it was to be inside, how nicely everything was. It was really a great day, so thank you for that. However, I do have some concerns. Mayor McClellan knows some of what I'm gonna say. City Manager Tungate, about mini golf. I still have issues with that, because here's my issues. Number one, mini golf, most people do not know it exists. It has not been publicized at all in years. When I did a poll in Oak Park Neighbors, there were 297 responses. Of those, 131 respondents did not know we have it, which is 44%. There were 40 people that said yes, they would use mini golf if it was budget-friendly, 13%. And 108 responses, 36% said they want it. Only 18 people said they do not want it, which is 6% of the respondents. There is an interest in it. It was moved before. It can be used again. It is trending right now in the greater metro Detroit area. It needs to be used. And the fact that it was a self-fulfilling prophecy, if you don't advertise it, they won't come, and that's exactly what's happened. It wasn't even mentioned in this summer brochure. And that was, I believe, that's some mistake that shouldn't have happened. And not just this year.
And then where do they have it now? There's some, Cranbrook has it as a fundraiser. Some other place has it in the dark, glow-in-the-dark.
Novi.
Novi, glow-in-the-dark. So it's, it's coming back.
It is. And the fact, and we were written up in a publication, Oakland County Moms. We're the only municipality that has it, which is why for us to get rid of it makes no sense. We have it. Let's just use it. Let's move it. My third thing, and I know I need to be brief, is box hockey. This was super popular back in the 60s, 70s, 80s. It was huge. We had tournaments. Pepper versus Key, Dewey versus Lessinger, Einstein versus Jackson. It was in the whole metro depart, metro Detroit area. It was a big thing. We had, I believe, six sets donated. We had, I believe, six sets donated by a resident in twenty-fifteen, when I was leading summer, summer fest activities with Amy Figgitt. They were donated. I was told they aren't using them because they're too heavy. Okay, let's install them with Elevate Oak Park. Let's permanently install them in the different parks. Let's put two in diff, in three different parks. Marine Varnish will seal it and weatherproof it. Let's use it. Let's use what we have. So I believe that it's good to have new things, but let's not get rid of everything that we know is inexpensive, good family fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Sherman?
Good evening, Ken Sherman on Drummond Oak Park. I have three items to bring up. One is the pool, and, you know, at the last city council meeting, City Manager Tungate mentioned that the city was spending on emergency sixty-five-hundred dollars to fix the mechanical issues that was keeping the pool closed. So I'm a little confused on what you said this evening, that this year we've spent like twenty-three thousand dollars for repairs. So does that mean between the sixty-five-hundred dollars and tonight, you have spent an additional seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars? To me, that's just putting bad money into a bad pool. Secondly, the fencing around where the event park is being built, that goes along Oak Park Boulevard, to me, that's a safety traffic hazard, because you cannot see when you're coming out of the library onto Coolidge, it obstructs your view, and you have to really be careful about pulling out from the driveway onto Coolidge, because you cannot see to the left because of the fencing, it obstructs your view. So I think that is something that needs to be addressed or looked at. And third of all, Crane, this past week, listed the worst truancy schools in the state of Michigan, and just in FYI, Oak Park Schools rated number three behind the city of Flint and Benton Harbor, which really gives, although it's not the city itself, but it gives the city a black mark, and I really think the city should take that into account and sit down with the school district and have some kind of discussions, because, I don't know, it's pretty bad. I mean, the school districts have had problems all along, and this just, to me, is another nail in the coffin of the Oak Park School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody motivated? No? What's that?
I just want to let people know for the event that's going to be on Wednesday, July twenty-third, in the city of Southfield, that we will have food available, and we will also have a kosher table for our.
Feed them and they will come. Thank you.
Thank you. We're very thoughtful.
Thank you. That's lovely, yeah, food, wow. So now we are on a call to the council, and, uh, I am wearing my Juneteenth t-shirt today, because I, I, I knew that my daughter was coming in, but I didn't know that she bought us, like, time at a condo up by a lake, and it was going to be Juneteenth that we were going to be up there. So I, I missed wearing my Juneteenth, but I was there in spirit, and everything I heard about it was phenomenal. Thank you. It was, uh, Mayor Protem was the one who brought it to the city of Oak Park, and it has gotten bigger and better every year, and this was the biggest and the best so far, so I can hardly wait for next year. I was at the pancake breakfast. Inside was lovely. You didn't have to worry about if it was going to be a hundred degrees, or if it rained, or anything. I, I was one that enjoyed the indoor air conditioning. Everything went, everything went smooth as silk, thanks to Director Schaaf, who worked her fingers to the bone on this one. It was phenomenal. It was perfect. The pancake breakfast and the auction, look at that. The littlest pancake lover. I thought it was too cute. It all went just extremely well. Then, the parade, I always, I always liked the Black Horsemen, who come from Mississippi, I think, to, to help us and perform. And the Oak Park High School marching band and drum corps are the best. They are just fun to watch. We had Corvettes, right, this time? We had the Corvettes, that was pop, popular. We have our Honored Grand Marshal, Leslie Harlick Ritchie here today. We can give her a round of applause. Can you stand up? Stand up so we can see you? There we go, thank you. All right. All right. She does, everything she does is quiet and behind the scenes, but she's always working. She is a workhorse, not a show pony, and we appreciate her. Mayor Protem, Sean Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a great Juneteenth, a great Fourth of July since our last city council meeting. But I really do want to thank the staff, our administration. This has been a crazy part of the season with budgets, then we go into Juneteenth, and then we have the State of the City right before that in between, and then there's Fourth of July. A lot of them work holidays, they don't complain, they just suit up and show up, and they, they just get the job done. And if there's a part missing, there's never a, a beat missed. And I just really want to thank Deputy City Manager for all his hard work, Adam, on Juneteenth, as well as Director Brittany, to us in the back as well. She helped so much with Juneteenth, and then our city manager as well. If you didn't get to see Juneteenth, definitely go on the city's YouTube. It's a great two, three-hour program up on the YouTube. And then Fourth of July was just a beautiful day. Always brings out the best in our city. I feel like we celebrated the best in all of Oakland County, and everybody have a really good summer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Julie Edgar. Nope, we've got Solomon Redner first.
You know, I didn't think I'd live to see the day that the mayor would stand up at a city council meeting and proudly rip open her jacket. But now I've seen it all.
I'm easy, but I'm not cheap. All right. Councilmember Julie Edgar.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I also thought that the pancake breakfast was wonderful. The whole event was great, and I got to drive a Bentley that was lent to us, and the, the comments people made along the route were just golden. One guy said, "You're in my car." Anyway, it was really nice. And I just wanted to thank PG here for your activism. You always make things happen, and good things happen, meaningful things. So thank you very much for that. Want to remind people that on Sunday, July the twentieth, we have Dog Day Afternoon at the dog park. That's, that's noon to three, and we're going to have lots of vendors, we're going to have a contest, so bring your dog, maybe your dog will win something. And then we have a pool party, our flamingo fiesta, that is going to be in the evening. It's for people eighteen and older. This is, this is going to be a fun event, and I hope that people who are upset about the pool closing at the end of the season will come out and enjoy a nice evening. We'll have food, we'll have kosher food as well, and games, and swag. It is ten dollars, so we ask that people pre-register by calling six-nine-one-seven-five-five-five, that's the rec department, or you can go directly to the community center, or go online and figure that out. So, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And City Councilmember Stephanie Crawford.
And just to echo what the mayor and Mayor Protem said, our, our, our Juneteenth was wonderful. It took a lot of moving parts, once again, to the staff, the team, the Juneteenth Board who worked so hard to put that on, thank you. I hope the community enjoyed it. It was beautiful. I would suggest everyone go online, take a look at some of the pictures and videos, Fourth of July, beautiful day. And also, I just want to remind everyone, I'm looking forward to our Oak Park Summer Concert Series, which starts in a few weeks. The first one, it's on Wednesdays, it's from seven to eight-thirty, and the first one begins July twenty-third, and it will not be at Shepherd Park, it is on the grassy area where the community center grounds are. So, Oak Park just has a lot of things planned this summer, don't we? And something for everyone, so come on out, and we'll see you there. And again, everyone be safe and have a great summer.
And there being no further business to come before the council, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here. Honorary Oak Parkers and Oak Parkers as well.